Okay, we're on.
Good.
Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, regular township council meeting on December 16th, 2014.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at Municipal Building on December 18th, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on December 20th, 2013, and the Star Ledger on December 23rd, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2013. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and are on cable vision, public access channel 21, at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Please rise for flag salute.
The flag of the United States of America. This is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its routine and justice law.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Council President Karifi.
Here. Also present: Mayor James R. Barberio, L&amp;M Sandman Business Administrator, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Anglissino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancy Wazermas, Township Clerk, Ann M. Coochie, CFO. Upcoming meetings: January 6th, at 7:30 p.m., reorganization and the agenda meeting; January 13th, 2015, 7:30 p.m., regular meeting. Closed session. Resolution: Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and contract negotiations, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality, the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Can you reconvene into open session?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Present.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, bids to be taken: none; requests for quotations, proposals, qualifications: none; ordinances for second reading and public hearing; ordinance number 2014:35. Mr. DePiero.
An ordinance to supplement the zoning ordinance of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, to provide for additional permitted uses in the ROL Research Office and Laboratory District. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on December 1st, 2014. Motion to accept ordinance 2014:35. Be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time entertain a motion to open up a public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, please state your name and sign in.
My name's Katie Cassidy.
Oh, I don't think the mic's on.
Yeah, you're projecting.
No more striking, Katie, right?
That was many years ago.
Give it a minute.
You can take it all. Take the mic out if you want.
Thanks. My name is Katie Cassidy, C-A-S-S-I-D-Y. Do you need my address? 7 Stephen Terrace, Parsippany, New Jersey.
You could do that after.
Just two questions. The first question: Has the tax assessor evaluated this ordinance?
Which ordinance are you referring to?
2014-35.
There's no, there's certainly no legal requirement for the tax assessor to review the ordinance.
The reason I ask is because it, to determine the value of a property wouldn't, that therefore have to be assessed.
Well, at the appropriate time, they would certainly have, he would certainly have to do that, but, but, but the tax assessor would not, doesn't have a role to play in his zoning ordinance.
And then I'd like to know what safeguards are in place to ensure that the research and potential production that would be done in these zones would not have any detrimental health effects on the general public?
The safety effects would be, or the safeguards would be, the safeguards that are, would already be built into the zoning, the zoning code. In other words, as I understand it, we're not creating a new zone here, we're just extending, putting this area into a zone that already exists in the township.
The zone would then allow for research laboratories with experimental testing or research facilities, pilot plants, connection with process fabrication assembly. There's a lot of environmental effects that occur when things are produced and also when things are being tested, and clearly if they're being tested, then they can't automatically be safe, otherwise they wouldn't be tested. So I'm just wondering how, how would you protect, how are you protecting the general public?
That is a very astute question, I might add. What is your major?
Political science, minors in psychology and global studies.
Oh, boy. We really, zoning is not the place to safeguard the public against the kinds of things. In other words, zoning would establish the uses that are permitted, i.e. manufacturing, et cetera. In terms of the specific types of testing that would go on in a facility like that, that would be governed by other laws, not municipality, because the municipality doesn't have that kind of jurisdiction. So, for example, if there was some sort of dangerous chemical that was being tested for something, you know, they would probably have to get a permit or some permission through FDA, something of that nature. That type of, of testing would not be governed by the zoning ordinances or by the municipality. The municipality is, is, is really only able to establish what uses are permitted. The actual chemicals themselves and what they would be doing, that's not something that, that local government is equipped to, to deal with. That's federal and state governmental agencies.
I know for a fact that the federal and state governmental agencies in the United States of America are not up to par, especially in, when you compare them with the environmental regulations in Europe. I know for a fact that you can begin at the local level to put pressure on these companies to make sure that the chemicals that they're using in your backyard are safe, and I think that this would be a perfect place to start making an effect. I understand that this is zoning, but by opening the door to this potential testing without having true safeguards to understand what exactly the effects are on the people in the area, I think is a little bit reckless. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one of the things that governing bodies sometimes do in instances like this, because, you know, a municipal governing body is limited by state statute in terms of what its powers are and what it can regulate, but there's certainly nothing prohibiting municipal governing bodies from passing resolutions to express support for an idea that, you know, they don't have the power to, to govern legally. And, and this governing body has done that on, on several occasions, and you forward those resolution to, to state legislators, to congressmen, and to United States senators, you know, to express the views, and, and if that's done in a coordinated way with a lot of local governing bodies, then, then there is a view expressed that you would hope that your elected representatives at other levels of government would, would, would take seriously and pay attention to and hopefully act upon.
Thank you.
If I can, if I can add to that, okay? The ordinance itself is broad in category, doesn't address all of your issues, however, if a company were to come here and want to build an office research or develop one out of existing facilities, okay, they would have to go before the planning board or the Board of Adjustment, okay? And those kind of concerns would be, would be verbalized by the planning board or by the Board of Adjustment, okay, to make sure safeguards are taken in, in our town, okay? And so in addition to federal and state standards, okay, we also are concerned about what goes on, what comes here to Parsippany, and those are the proper boards that would go into detail on what is handled and, and how.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Ordinance number 2014:36. Mr. Peluso.
Ordinance number 2014:36, an ordinance amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 14, Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, Vale Road. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on December 4th, 2014. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2014:36, to be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, see no one come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Peluso, you had something you want to say about a committee?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that if there's any open committee seats, that we encourage the public to actually go out there and submit their name for any open committee positions. We'd like to get all of our committees filled by the council and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing. Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, when you come up front, please sign in, state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes.
You can? Okay.
Not chocolate.
Should I move away from the box? I might get better as time goes on, Roy. Oh, isn't that nice? Oh, and a special note.
All right, Manny. Heard you.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Roy.
I said excellent.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I just want you ready to, Roy Masmer, Ten Drummond Drive. I don't want any more than five minutes. John and I will be flying to Dallas tomorrow morning, right, Mr. Anglissino?
I'm sorry?
Flying to Dallas tomorrow morning.
On your jet?
Again, Roy Masmer, Ten Drummond Drive. Enough of the holiday cheer. Now it's showtime. Every year I write Santa Claus. Tonight I'd like to share with you my letter this year. Dear Santa, I've been a very good boy this year, and so I'm hoping you could sure make my Christmas wishes come true. Number six, it's six bounder one. The six elected officials that I'm standing in front of tonight, or they're sitting in front of me, provide their elect reports at the council meetings when they approximately do. I don't mean all of them today, they won, like say if you need, one's, one's due December 31st, the next council meeting, just have them here. I believe in transparency. Number five, administration be timely in responding to the residents that request information at the council meetings. Number four, the administration enforce ordinances such as the home maintenance ordinance, one, two, occupancy ordinance, and the occupancy for the occupancy tax. Double there. Number three, administration and council lobby to state legislators to review the real estate tax formula for apartments. It's killing the state of New Jersey, especially a town like Parsippany, where one-third of our living units are apartments. Two, and I just want to say this, last night I came to the planning board meeting, I know I got to go fast, but I didn't expect to have this. Yancy's car was here at 6:40, Ellen's and Paul's cars are here a lot of times on weekends. In fact, Ellen, I thought she was at the float, but she was here. So I like, because I think people should be accountable, people should know what people are doing, a time clock at all municipal buildings, the blue collar workers got to do it, like that. Number one, blue collar workers' pay scale in line with surrounding towns. Now the, President Fauci. As you all know, I don't know if who's new here tonight, I always do it on both sides, so the public can see too. Hey, gentlemen, this apartment garbage collection, it's going to cost us a lot of money unless, and it's going to help what I'm suggesting here tonight. Apartment units, we have about 7,000 in town, even came out last night at the planning board meeting. Our annual garbage expense, I calculate to be $180 a unit. That's site collection, recycling, when they go to the recycling center, labor and equipment, and lawn waste.
Roy, I'm sorry, can you just hold the mic? That way you can, that way we can record you.
The next, the next line item is what that total comes to, $1,260,000. The investor rate of return, this is a formula that's in the tax courts, it goes all the way back to Henry Luther in the early 70s, this Supreme Court case, 5%, they want to return. You just do the calculation, it's called the increase in property value, $25,200,000. Assessment ratio to value, in our town, we're 85 and pretty much throughout the county, brings down a ratable base, you can all read as well as I can, $21,420,000, however, our mill rate right now is about 2.69. The total tax revenue brought into the town is $576,198. Now, on the bottom here, not well written perhaps or seen, but the average tax on apartment unit in this town right now is about 1,200. Yes, you have some that are higher, some a little bit lower, but I think my numbers are pretty darned close. The municipal portion we get is only 20%. That's $240 a year to the municipality per apartment unit. We have the garbage at $180 a year, if I'm right, that's only $60. That's to pay for all the salaries, you know, you know, this police officer, on and on. I have to go quick, because I only get five minutes. Tonight, I'm giving one side here to the clerk's office. I'm sure the administration is going to have Dan Casse, Greg, which they should, Dan Casse, Greg Snyder, review this, and hopefully after the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, we can, you can beat me up on my numbers. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Please enjoy that book, and please pass it on. It's a great Christmas gift also to buy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It is a great book.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you.
You had 30 seconds, Roy. I don't want to cut you.
Nah, it's okay.
I'll pass one on to John.
Well, John got his billion-dollar ticket. That would be funny, John. From my mouth to God's ears.
Roy, we've become best friends.
And if I'm right, this young lady, I've got 30 seconds left, I want her to register, I don't know what her registration is, I want her to run against Hillary Clinton.
That's nice.
Yeah, that is nice. My time was enough. Who's the time clock?
You're good, Roy.
Thank you, Larry. Oh, and thank you for this, ladies. This is the step I requested, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Could be a tough act to follow.
Oh, the horse.
Yeah, the horse. It's, she's phenomenal.
Good evening. Ken Tolsky, 21 Winfield Drive, Parsippany. The last time that I spoke to you, I believe, was, excuse me, the last time that I spoke about the pilgrim pipeline, was I believe the night that you passed the first resolution to oppose the pilgrim pipeline, the first in the state. I'm very happy to tell you now that we have 17 towns that have opposed. Last night, New Providence was, was number 17. I very much enjoyed being there and, and watching that process. However, I would also like to just talk for a few minutes about the fact that passing these resolutions, and of course, passing the resolutions has now empowered people in the Assembly and people in the Senate to put forth similar resolutions opposing it, so we have a lot of momentum going, and hopefully we will prevail. We're still working to get many more towns to oppose it, and I'm sure we will, probably another half a dozen in January. However, passing the resolution for a town is really just the first step, and there are other things that we would like all the towns to do, and in general, it's to get together, form a coalition of towns, and to be able to, to work together so that when pilgrims should go in front of the DEP or the BPU, that the townships are coordinated, and if necessary, pool resources, perhaps hire attorneys, and fight this. And there are a few other things that we'd like the towns to do also. One is to appoint a liaison person. That would be the person who would communicate with the other towns, go proactively and talk to the other towns, and be the point person. Also be the point person that I could talk to in Parsippany, so that when there's a request that I could hand to the council, that I have a person that I, that's been assigned to work on this, which would make my life a lot easier. And another thing that we'd like the towns to do is to write a letter, and then we have a sample for you, to PSCNG. PSCNG has sort of said they're opposed to the pipeline, and told us privately that they were opposed, and then when it was released to the public, and they told us that we could release that to the public, they then turned around and said, "Well, maybe, you know, we don't want to go public with this." So we're taking a very proactive approach to PSCNG, and saying, "Look at all the towns that are in your community, and we want all the towns to, please ask them to come forward and, and oppose the pipeline." So I have six requests and a form letter for the opposition to, for the letter to PSCNG. So I'd like to give this to you, I can give this to Yancy right now, and I could send it to you electronically, and I'd like to you to appoint someone that would be the point person, and let me know who that person is. If you want to do it right now, that's great, if you want to think about it and come up with a name, but I would really like to know who that person is, and then be able to have some regular communications with that person.
What we can do is put in concert with our engineer to be the liaison, I'll speak with him tomorrow, and to work with Ellen as well, because he would, he would be the perfect person to be the liaison.
Well, we need somebody.
Another, another thought would be someone from the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that's fine.
They have some pretty sharp, expert people in that, on that committee. It'd be great to utilize them, too.
Chuck Thomas would be the perfect person.
And, but I would like to work in concert with them, because I'm the, you know, the person that's here 24/7, and, and have done that, and I will tell you, Ken, that I've been quasi kind of doing it kind of on my own, because, because we did pass the first resolution, I, people have been reaching out for me, and I've been sending the copy, so I'll take a little credit for some of those 17 that passed it, because I did communicate with them, and we did have Justin Lisa go to the meeting on, quite short notice, but he was there, and, oh yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you know, and, you know, you know, Mike was, you know, you know, pushing for that, but, yeah, we're, we're, we're following it very closely, and we know you're a bulldog, so we'll be there with you.
So I want to use my bulldog somewhere else.
Yes, yes, right, right, right.
So just to also just point out that this person would be responsible for working with other towns.
Yes.
And trying to create a political consortium or a coalition.
Right, and the reason why I'm saying as a, as a point person, I'm easily accessible, and then I would work in concert with that, that other individual, so that you always have, you know.
Okay, that's great.
I just want to know for the record.
Because we do communicate on Saturdays, Sundays, and, and after hours, I know we have.
No, forming a coalition is a very good idea, but Chatham is already taking the lead on, on forming a coalition with a website as well, and they have expressed interest in them promoting their website to host all comments and to pull all the communities together. So I think if there's a coalition to be started, I think Chatham should be consulted out of respect for their efforts they've done so far.
Well, I received an email, and we're going, we're going to reach out to other towns in the community, and usually, you know, I've been through this coalition before with PSCNG, and they, they depend on the big towns like Parsippany to, to get involved, and I've been involved in the past with other townships when we had the PSCNG power lines coming through, and this would be no different. We would, you know, but we would coordinate it with, you know, with Ellen and the other towns as well.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that you start something as opposed to.
No, no, we were like, like Councilman, who said.
I've been to Chatham.
We're together.
And I'm really impressed with what they're doing, but I'm just saying, we need somebody to, whatever the coalition is, we want to be part of it.
Right.
That's all, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The microphone picks up, it's part of the recording system.
Does that feel good?
For the young lady that was up here, our water department, or any water department, do they test for pharmaceuticals in the water? On any level, anywhere? Is that?
They will review plans submitted, and they will review and put input with regard to what is going on, Nick.
Who will?
The water department reviews.
Oh, yeah, I, I remember when they were having a budget, the gentleman didn't even know about the Water Quality Commission, said he never heard of it, and I remember the next day in the paper, it was reinstated, Governor Christie got rid of it, and then he brought it back, so I, you know, from that experience alone, I, you know, I'm wondering. But my question was a very simple one, is there any measure from federal, state, into the municipality about concerning pharmaceuticals in the water supply? Is that part of when they test the water? Is it just arsenic, lead? Does it, or doesn't it include pharmaceuticals?
Nick, I don't know offhand what the water department tests for, what they're, what base they're testing on, I would have to get back to you on that.
Because I would think that's, you know, pretty important, because, you know, it's all kind of.
They publish a report every year, you can get the report.
The Consumer Confidence Report, which is online now, actually.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't have too much confidence in that either, because the pharmaceutical companies are probably, you know.
Nick, you're very cynical. You know, seriously, though, the real testing is done at the sewer, because so many people, which you might be thinking now, you get a prescription, it makes your stomach a little wheezy, and no one brings, they've got to start bringing them into the police department to get them destroyed, they throw them down the toilet, that's where the testing has to start, it really does start there, and I'm serious, you know, I've been dealing with.
It needs to start there, or it is?
It is definitely there, but I'm just saying that's something that they really monitor.
Because it is a scientific fact that we're.
The Municipal Alliance Committee already, you know, discussed that as well, about people flushing their pharmaceuticals down the toilet or the drain, because it does get into the sewage and the water supplies.
Oh, yeah.
So we asked for all those types of medications that are prescribed to be, bring into, them to the police department, so they get destroyed properly, and out of children's hands as well.
Yeah.
So, it's a good question, though.
That's, I'm, I'm sure, I mean, yeah, but, all right.
are prescribed to be bringing them to the police department, so they get destroyed properly and out of children's hands as well.
Yeah.
So it's a good question, though.
I'm sure, I mean, yeah, but, all right.
Yeah, but the water quality needs, and it's supposed to be tested, you know, they're supposed to go to the homes and test, you know, you run the water for a bit, and they test them. I know I did it in Denver when I was very involved with the water department.
All right.
So we'll check, I'm sure they do it here.
Merry Christmas.
You, too.
Yeah, we used to go to.
Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Consent agenda, Mr. Stanton.
Be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the township council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered as normal sequence on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, approval of minutes, non-consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
No.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, none. Resolutions, non-consent agenda, Mr. DePiero.
Resolution 2014-169, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, authorizing the execution of a contract with Fairview Insurance Agency Associates, Inc., for health insurance broker of record services. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Okay, just let it be known that that resolution has been amended, and that will include that that is for the calendar year of 2014 only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
No.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Resolution 2014-200.
Resolution 2014-200, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, authorizing 2014 budget appropriation transfers. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Or 2014-201, resolution Township Council, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, approving a corrective action plan for 2013 audit.
Second.
Make a motion. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. 2014-2002, Mr. Valori?
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, authorizing the cancellation of the uncollected credit balances from the sewer utility for sludge net debit balance.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Resolution 2014-2003, Mr. DePiero.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, authorizing the cancellation of a credit balance for the sewer utility. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?[1620.04]